All right. It is six thirty here at the North Mason Boardroom and I will call the meeting to order. Please stand for the plates.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. And I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as given.
All right, any discussion? Not hearing any, that passes. And then we are on to public comments on the agenda items and I have Mr. LePere. And do you want to speak now or would you like to speak at a specific time? When it arises.
Dr. LePere.
What?
Would you like to speak now or would you like to speak when it comes up?
As needed later.
Okay.
You didn't vote on that approving the agenda either.
We don't do that yet.
Oh, you don't anymore?
Oh, wait.
No, we need to vote on this.
Yeah, you did.
No, we didn't vote.
Oh, discussion, does it not come in?
Yeah, discussion and then...
Sorry.
Thank you.
Everybody signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye as well and any opposed? Not hearing any, thank you. That now passes and he is going to speak when that comes up.
And I will read.
And then we're going to do the...
She has another, she has a comment to read.
Yep, the public comment and she is going to read.
Yes, we, we do have some written public comments submitted by Mr. Ken Van Buskirk and there are two different comments, one dated on the fourteenth and one dated today. So I will read both of those at his request. Superintendent Rosenberg and school board members, I respectfully ask that these comments be read into the record regarding Agenda Item Number Four, Proposed Disposition of the Theller Wetlands. For the record, my name is Ken Van Buskirk and I am a North Mason graduate, a former Theller Board Member and a former school board member. Some of you will recall that the previous Theller Board attempted to surplus the Theller Parking Lot Trust Property Number Sixteen to the P Pacific Northwest Salmon Center in two thousand five, two thousand six, which ultimately led to dismissal of the Theller Board and sighting of the Pacific Northwest Salmon Center in a different location. Please recall that in two thousand fourteen, the previous school board and superintendent attempted to surplus the same property to the Mason Transit Authority and were not successful. I did a public records request of the school and the Mason Transit Authority and discovered that important guiding documents to include the nineteen fifty-three will and the nineteen eighty environmental impact statement. That surplus action was rescinded as a part of the settlement agreement. Please recall, I attempted to testify at the community forum in January two thousand sixteen regarding Theller and was denied the opportunity to finish my public comments. There are other federal and state grants regarding the Theller Trails and Wetlands other than the nineteen fifty-three will and the nineteen eighty environmental impact statement that will need to be researched and vetted for obligations and conditions therein. I would therefore ask that you table this action. If you instead elect to approve, I would ask that you amend the resolution to require the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife to restore the two thousand twelve trail breach and freshwater stormwater detention pond to their original conditions. I believe the restoration would be consistent with not only the nineteen ninety-five grant but also the other federal and state grants, consistent with the nineteen ninety-three perpetual non-exclusive access easement agreement that contains specific covenants including restrictions and obligations and supported the vacationing of a, vacating of a portion of Mason County Roseale Road and placement of Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife hunting lines, also consistent with the nineteen eighty Theller environmental impact statement. I would also ask that you amend the property transfer agreement, Section Two, Conditions of Transfer B, Public Oversight, that the North Mason School District, instead of the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, create an advisory group specific only to the Theller Wetlands involved in this transfer. The group would provide advice and input to the WDFW and consist of three to five residents of the North Mason School District only and include the school superintendent. The North Mason School District, not the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, will have sole discretion as to membership criteria and selection for the advisory committee. Regardless of whether you table the action, amend or approve the action Thursday evening, I would request a formal roll call vote on this important community decision. I am happy to discuss this matter with Ms. Stifarm, any board member, or Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife personnel that cares to call. Respectfully yours, Ken Van Buskirk. And then dated this morning. This morning, I watched the public hearing from December eighth in which the two thousand twelve breach was discussed by the board and superintendent. I heard someone laugh when it was brought up. That is inappropriate. I would like to comment regarding the two thousand twelve trail breach and the stormwater settlement pond that has been destroyed over the last ten years. I discovered a small hole in the trail in two thousand twelve and immediately reported it to the Theller Board and the former school superintendent. He told the board that it was the school district's responsibility and the dike would be repaired as soon as possible. At least two of the current school board member, will, members will remember those comments. When the Salmon Center installed the new trail system just to the north, they also installed two one-way culverts similar to the one that was destroyed a quarter mile away. The project could easily have been amended to include repair to the stormwater settlement pond, but it was not. The stormwater settlement pond now sends stormwater directly into the Hood Canal. I recently saw salmon in the ditch line of the Coulter Creek Road. That does not make the ditch line salmon habitat. I believe there are at least two culverts upstream of the settlement pond on the Theller property under consideration for transfer. Will they be required to be converted to fish, fish passage culverts? Or are we not going to discuss it? As before, I request a roll call vote this evening. Thank you, Ken Van Buskirk.
Thank you. All right. And then we have here student board member comments today.
So I'll start off. I only have a couple. So this, we are wrapping up our last school week of this year, of this calendar year and tomorrow's going to be a half day. And so that's going to be fun. We're, we've done a spirit week all week and tomorrow's going to be dress like your favorite movie character. So that'll be fun. We'll see how that turns out. We also had a food drive that went on this month. It was quite a success. We were able to take everything and donate it to the North Mason Food Bank and they were very happy to receive that. I think we got just under five hundred items of food for the food bank. So that was a huge success. And then we got a roundtable set up for, I believe, January seventeenth will be our next one, or seventeenth or eighteenth will be our next roundtable meeting. And then we're still trying to do one at the middle school too with some of the kids, but it's hard to get all of them there because they are all on separate bus, not bus, bell schedules. So we're, we're trying to work something out that won't disrupt the entire day, but it's, it's proving to be a little challenging. And then the only other thing is, is we have Tolo coming up, January twenty-seventh. And so that'll be fun.
And for what I have to say, so actually yesterday I volunteered at the Giving Tree and we did the organize, like the organizing of that. I believe they still have a little bit more to do because, so our DECA chapter is usually like who volunteers to help out with that. And we weren't able to have the best showing, so I think they're still working on it. I think they'll be working on it on Friday. But the actual distribution is on Saturday from nine to one and it's open, I think, open to the public to help, I'm pretty sure. So if you guys want to, you can do that. But, so yeah, that's on Saturday from nine to one, this Saturday.
Thank you. I just want to real quick about that because I had a friend ask about that and they were turned away to, they said, we have too many volunteers, but it was before this week.
Okay.
So I may connect with you for like a phone number.
Yeah.
Later.
That would be helpful. Thank you. Okay. And so what are you dressing up as for your favorite movie characters?
We're, I'm still working on that. We'll see, whatever I have around pretty much.
Do you already know?
I don't attend to high school, but I do have, I, I have an elf like shirt.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, from the elf movie and so it's got like a fuzzy white, yeah, the whole costume.
I have that for you. That's very cool. All right. Okay. Well, next I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. And any discussion? Okay, not hearing any. All for it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well and all opposed? Not hearing any, that passes. And then, sorry, my computer just kind of froze up on me. There we go. And then we are down to the Belfair Elementary presentation.
I am Jessica Collins, Principal of Belfair Elementary and I am super proud to have some of my team members here with me tonight. And we're here to brag about something great that's happening at Belfair. We've been working on for a few years and it's a program called WIN TIME, what I need. And Mr. King was a part of this too, so give him his props. Katie Eeks is taking her little one to the bathroom, but she's coming back in. I just want to introduce you to everyone. My sidekick, Mrs. Mart, is not here tonight. She is home ill. But Katie Eeks right here is our amazing learning specialist. Her partner in crime is an awesome parent educator, Jean Barker. I have my, part of my third grade team here and this is Leah Napp and Courtney Thomas. And that's, that's his mom. Yeah. And then Kim Palmer couldn't make it tonight. She is ill as well. And so is Bernadette Dunbar. It's kind of, I don't know.
It's that time.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we wanted to come here again and brag about WIN TIME. WIN is an acronym for what I need. And just to give you a little bit of an overview of why we have WIN TIME, I wanted to talk to you about our mission statement here at Belfair. This is our third year with this same mission statement and we're going to keep it for a long time because we truly believe in it. At Belfair, we strive for high levels of learning by using multi-tiered systems at support. You guys have probably heard that acronym, MTSS. And it's a framework that guides collaboration and teaming and data to inform tier one, tier two, and tier three instruction. And so tonight, what I have here is a team that's going to kind of highlight some of those pieces. Tonight, we're focusing really on tier one and tier three. Katie's team really focuses on tier three. Actually, all of our people focus on tier three. But we also are going to highlight tier one just a little bit. Another purpose for coming tonight and bragging about WIN is we have a reading goal at Belfair Elementary and our reading goal is that in partnership with parents and community and staff, the percentage of students that at the end of the year on the report card are marked at, at, at or above reading level will increase from fifty-seven percent last June to seventy percent this June. So in order to do that, we have made lots of commitments around improving instruction and getting super focused on what our kids need, hence WIN, what I need. So right here is our current data. We just had a report card go out and this is the, like I said, there is a piece on our report card that all teachers have to mark. There's three boxes, whether a student is reading above, at, or below grade level. So this is our current data in the fall. At the very bottom is our total. As a school, we have forty-five percent of our students are at or above grade level in reading. I went back and did a little bit of looking back over the past three years. It's kind of hovered right there in the fall. We've been around forty-eight, forty-five percent. So as you can see, some of our grade levels have a ways to go. Some of them are doing quite well. Highlighting fourth grade, they are really, I'm super proud of that. They don't have a lot of long ways to go. So we have a lot of hard work ahead of us and I, again, would like these guys to brag a little bit about what they're doing and what they're currently seeing. Some of the commitments that we've put in place is we committed as, actually as a district to highlight data dive. So during our PLC, our teams get together at Belfair Elementary and at Sand Hill, we've committed to have our data dives incorporate two grade levels at a time. So we do a K one, a two, three, and a four, five, which allows our students to kind of access anything. We don't, we don't identify them at that time as a grade. They are skill that they need, what do they need? All these teams come together and look really hard at that data and develop a plan. We also have a master schedule that reflects that WIN TIME so that everybody can rotate and get what they need. This is our district calendar that highlights those data dives. They're at different times so that our specialist teams can push into those and be those experts in the room to help guide our grade levels.
Can I ask you what PLC means real fast?
Yes, professional learning community. Sorry, throw out these acronyms and think everybody knows them. Yeah. So that's where all the magic happens. So I would like to present to you my third grade team and we're going to talk about their tier one data. This right here is our FastBridge screener data and we take that three times a year. And as you can see up here, it lets us know as a whole grade level where we are weak and where we need to tweak our tier one because we cannot intervene out of an issue. We have to look at our core and how are we going to make tweaks to that to ensure all our kids get what they need.
All right. So after we tested our students in FastBridge at the beginning of the year and analyzing the data, as you can see, we found that only sixty percent demonstrated mastery and phonemic awareness. Twenty-nine percent were on track for fluency and phonics and only thirty-nine percent were on track for general reading. So as you can see, that's well below the eighty percent that we'd love to see. So currently, right now, our core curriculum is Ready Gen, which based on this data right now is a little too high for most of the students. And because of that, we knew that we would need to adjust what we were teaching our students in tier one or as a whole class to meet the needs of the students. So some of the changes that we have made to supplement with, is a program called Haggerty, which focuses on phonemic awareness and SIPs, which focuses more on phonics and fluency. And we use those two programs both in Core and in our, in our WIN and tier two and tier threes. So they're getting that intense instruction in both places on those skills that they're lacking. And Leah will speak more about some of the success that we've been seeing in third grade.
So we took a look at a grade level at our PLC time yesterday. So all third grade teachers met together and we talked about what kind of growth we're seeing as far as fluency data. So that is sitting one-on-one with each student at a table and having them read a short selection for one minute to see how many words they can read per minute. And we've been seeing really good things. So the normal amount of growth to see in a whole school year is thirty words per minute. And so in all of third grade, we had ten students that have already grown more than twenty words per minute in only the first three and a half months of school. And then seven students grew more than thirty words per minute and three students grew more than forty words per minute, which is massive amounts. So growed up and jumping up and down when we do that test grade. And eleven students went from below grade level to then needing or at grade level. And two of those eleven grew more than forty words per minute in just a few months. Super proud of that.
That's great.
How many, how many third grade students?
Fifty. So the next thing that we want to talk about is base book of that tier one instruction, what all kids get, what all third graders will get and are getting and what they're seeing in that growth due to that commitment to teaching that phonics and phonemic awareness. Really quick, I just want to, in case you don't know, phonemic awareness is everything you hear. So if you're going to blend a word or segment a word, if I said, what sounds, what word am I saying when I say these sounds, d, a, g? Kids need to understand that that says dog. Or if I say, John, can you please tell me all the sounds you hear in cat? K, at, t, and be able to pull those apart. It's also rhyming. It's like taking out a sound, say the word sip without the s, ip. So that's phonemic awareness. So truly, all the way through K five, it showed a need for phonemic awareness. It's the foundational skill kids must have to be great fluent readers. With fluent readers comes comprehension, students that can comprehend with their reading. So it's super important. Katie's team is really focused on tier three and tier two and those are the students that are getting that tier one, but we're not seeing that they're, they need more. They needed another layer, so we'll, we add another layer. Some of our students need then another layer. So we really have to look at that data and look at what they really need. Katie's, the reason Katie's team is here is that we have decided, we've committed to developing what we call a WIN room at Belfair Elementary and Katie's team is implementing instruction in that WIN room. There's a couple of pictures up there of Katie's team and Katie meets with them every morning. She has a group of parent educators and they go over what the instruction is going to look like in that room and she's going to come up here and give you a little bit of overview of how it's going in there.
So I am, we, we call, I'm a learning specialist this year, so I'm a special education teacher. And so before this year, I would solely work with students who had IEPs. And so Jessica and I had been trying to figure out what is the way that we can bring in those tier three students who do not have an IEP but still need that same level of instruction and where can we go? And how can we create, still have a small group environment for all of these students? So I had the idea of turning a classroom into a small group room with a bunch of small group stations and then we can take our students with IEPs and kind of level them and then bring in general education students. So I went to Jessica with my idea and at first I was kind of playing around with like, you know, maybe this is something we could look into for next year, you know, kind of what do you think? But she's such a go-getter. Her reaction was, well, why can't we do it now? And I was like, oh, okay. So, so I left the room and five minutes later, not even, she came back to my room and was like, well, the custodians are cleaning out the old music room and they're getting it ready to go and in about a week or two, you're going to move your stuff in there. And then it was like boom, boom, boom. And so we've been in there now for maybe three weeks, maybe, I don't know if it's gone so fast. But anyways, it's been an absolute joy in that room. It's worked out perfectly. There's enough separation that it's not distracting and it's not too loud, yet all the students really get that significant small group feel and intense instruction. There's only four students per table, so we're really able to meet their needs. And we've, at our data dives, have been bringing in a lot of general education students and filling up those tables to four with them. So we have our students with IEPs working alongside their general education peers, but we're focusing completely on the skills that they need. So it's been really powerful and we've all really, really enjoyed it. It's working out really well. And so that is what we have named the WIN room.
How does it work? Like just how does it work? How do you get the students? If I'm a student, when do I go?
So we have a block in our schedule called WIN and so that is when the students go to the rooms that has what they need. So at the data dive days, I'll say, okay, so I have this group here who, I have two students in it and they're working on, you know, CVC words. So we have room for two more. Do you have students who are at that level who need that instruction? And then we'll plug two more in. Or I'll say, okay, so I have these students who are working on SIPs extension level, which the teachers all are familiar with and whatnot. And then, so they'll say, okay, yes, we have these two, that that would be a good fit. And so we, we fill it in and then that's created our groups that we can work through over the six weeks and progress monitor. And then we'll come back again and see how their growth is and see if they need to move or stay where they are depending on what we see.
The kids stay in that same group for?
For the six weeks.
Six weeks.
At least, yes.
Okay.
Yes, as long as they need it. And then the, the hope would be that they make enough gains to be able to move up then into a tier two and continue to grow till they get back to that tier.
But you're saying it's not just tier three kids in the WIN room because you do fill it in with gen ed?
The tier three students are from general education.
Okay.
Yes. And then there, and then there are students in there who have IEPs and they all meet at the same time, so it's a more inclusive environment.
Exactly.
Yes. So it's not just where I used to be, like kind of cut off from gen ed and only, but now I can kind of bring anybody in who needs that instruction.
I see. Okay. So I guess where I'm, what I sort of was missing is these tier three students don't necessarily need to have an IEP.
Right.
You're just seeing that they are, really need that intensive.
Exactly. The data just shows that they would be at a tier three level and that they need the skills that I'm working on with my students with IEPs and so we group them up.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions for us?
How come the scores are so low in that one category? Twenty-nine.
Phonemic awareness.
Oh.
Phonics and fluency.
Phonics and fluency. That's a great question. That's a fantastic question. I think that there might be several reasons.
Could you just describe what that is? Like phonics and fluency?
Phonics is the auditory. Phonics is the reading of that. So phonics would be understanding that this is the letter A, the letter A can say at or a, and then you can put the letters C, A, and T together blending that. So that's phonics. So when our scores are showing us that they're missing phonemic awareness and phonics, you can see in that, that part right up there where it says zero point two, phonemic awareness and phonics, that lets us know that as, on average, those kids are sitting at basically a kindergarten level in that area. So they really need that intense instruction and because overall they need that, that's why the tier one is happening. The reason for it could be that these third graders didn't really have a great, I mean, this third.
They started kindergarten.
Yes.
During COVID. So they probably missed a lot of those really basic skills that they normally would have gotten.
And so the core curriculum that we keep talking about, the curriculum that we teach all the kids in my way, it doesn't have a strong phonics piece built in, which is why we've modified that instruction. And so we're now including really heavy doses of the phonics and the hearing piece of phonemic awareness. So that's something new that we're trying to address that problem.
That's really interesting.
So my takeaway is an essential part of this is the plague. I mean, we had the interruption of school and the rest of it and had not been for that, this would have been a higher school. And part of it is that this wasn't an area of emphasis in the previous program.
And I think, and then another layer of that is the core instructional pieces that we have do not address this skill set that our kids need as much as it needs to know. Okay. So we're as professionals, Katie's really helped us to really dug into what are some good supplemental things that we could do to increase those two pieces.
Yeah, it was last year, actually, so I knew that our tier one needed a stronger phonemic awareness piece and so I, I knew that Haggerty was a really solid phonemic awareness program. So at the time, it was Jessica and Dan and I had went to them and presented Haggerty to them and, and the need. And so they were gracious enough to, to get that for our schools so that it could be implemented in that tier one so that everybody could get that stronger phonemic awareness instruction.
Jessica, do you work with Sand Hill? You know, are they seeing the same things and do you try to kind of align what you're doing?
Yes, I would say this, this idea of WIN kind of grew from together where we both have a very similar master schedule. Both schools are doing WIN. I would say that Sand Hill might be about a year ahead of us.
Okay.
In that they already are executing WIN for math. This is kind of our year of what would that look like? What kind of tools do we need? Katie's got a few grade levels that are actually engaging with her and we're utilizing the WIN room for math as well. So we're growing and developing that and it really truly starts with the PLC, the professional learning community and making sure that we know how to look at, for one, what data are we going to look at? Two, how are we looking at it? Three, how are we going to progress monitor what we, now that we know they need this, well, which one are we going to use and how are we going to progress monitor that? Because if you don't have those pieces in place and you don't have that, that know, it's kind of a, yeah, it doesn't work well. So those were the pieces that we've been working on for the past three years and... And we are really seeing a lot of adult growth around this, which is super exciting. Yeah.
That is. With this, I'm not sure what year this report card and that first or second or third slide that you had was, but like with the, when I, like the kindergarten being at thirty-three percent.
This year, that's this one. This last report card that just went out.
Do you, you know, do you think that like the transitional kindergarten will like help make that, those incoming students?
I, what I want to do is I want to dig into that and see those, I think we probably got thirty-six, thirty-five kids from transitional kindergarten, and see where they're at within this.
I want to know that too.
Knowing that this year, Bel Air Elementary is kind of one with Feller. And so I have been able to get into those TK classrooms, those transitional kindergarten classrooms, and the rigor and what they are engaging in makes me go back to my kindergarten and say, ooh, we got to up our game. Because these four-year-olds are getting it. So I have a feeling, once that grows, we're not going to see this. I think that this thirty-three percent reflects our community help. It does. We have to get our families engaged in knowing what do my, what does my kid need?
Yeah, do we have readiness for kindergarten? You know, I know South Kids app has a lot of like readiness for kindergarten programs that I think they get funding for, I'm not sure, you know, and where they invite the parent in and they get the like booklets, the binders full of things, and here's what you need to be doing in the next year to get your kid ready for kindergarten.
You know, I think last year, we did a lot of reflection on WIN, because we did what, we called it a kindergarten roundup in the past, called something different last year, and we did it in the spring. And we had talked about how we need to move that earlier for a few reasons. One being that we know how to staff kindergarten in earlier, kindergarten teachers earlier. But also to give that information, hey, you know, this, it's February now, between now and the, in the fall, please let them know how to write their name. Please let them know. I mean, if they have those skills coming in, they're going to be so much better off.
And we actually did have that through the ESD a few years ago, but they are struggling to have staff, and we lost some of our ESD pre-kindergarten services because of their, they are not able to staff them fully right now. So we did have some of that Ready-Kay stuff going on out here. And am I right? Are your TK scores included in the kindergarten score in your fast bridge?
Okay, okay. I would, I know a couple of parents whose kids are in TK, and the way they make it sound, I'm like, dang, that's a lot of work for a four-year-old, and they, the kids come home and they just pass out. They're like.
And, and you know, it's, there's, I think there's two sides to this, you know? It is what it is, because the expectation right now, or the kindergarten, they're going into first grade, is they're reading. And when she mentions CVC, that's a consonant L consonant, so they're reading words like cat and had and sat, and they're recognizing their letters, and they're, they're knowing their numbers. And there's an expectation that they are mathematicians and readers, right? And so how do we make sure that they have what they need? And I do think that that's something we need to focus on, because they're going into first grade with, they don't have what they need. And then they're staying in third grade. They don't have what they need. They're just always a step behind. So we have to, we have to up our game, up the expectations, and get it down there.
How, how do you feel like this is different than what was, has been tried before?
Good question, because, you know, that definition of Sandy is, you can do what you've always been doing. Truly, I think where the magic is happening. And we're, we take our next fast bridge screener when we come back in January. So the magic, I think, that is happening currently right now is that we are really tweaking that tier one. So adding that, recognizing, okay, our core instruction doesn't have these pieces that our kids need. Instead of just trying to fumble through and pull them through, we're going to stop what we're doing and say, okay, what are we looking at? They have to have this. It is a must. So I'm hoping that that is going to make a difference. Hoping this gets better.
To just give you a picture too, of what we do in the classroom before, what we were doing, like last shows, or we do it with them, the ready drill program, the beginning text that we start with in September is written at a fourth grade level. And so asking the kids to answer really complex questions with a text they can't even sound out half the words in, we were dragging them through, and they really weren't doing the thinking they weren't able to. And so we want them to be honest, actually read the text that we're asking them questions about. Those are the, this kind of thing.
So our hope is that we start early, we start it on, we break that rigor. I mean, we don't want that they cry, but we want them to. I, what I want is that they're, they are capable, and knowing that every kid is capable of learning is super important. They have to believe in themselves. We, as their, their young leaders, have to believe in it. And make learning fun, make it awesome. These kids are amazing in what they do, and really focusing on exactly what they need and get it handled.
Let me ask you, this is a positive question, because if I were, if we were carrying this report five, 10 years ago, would you be even reporting on these things? Or is this something that is new, that we're focusing on now that we realize the problem? Because what these low numbers actually mean is that we're better diagnosticians.
No, I do believe we are better because I believe whatever that brings. No, I do believe we're getting better.
We know what we're looking for now.
See, look at you, see? You're pulling apart. No, um, yeah. Yes, I think we're getting better at looking at data. I think we're getting better at knowing exactly what our kids need. I think we're getting also better at understanding what it is to teach a student to read. What are the pieces? What are the musts they must have to be a reader? We can have kids in fifth grade that are amazing readers, couldn't pull apart that word that you were just saying. Like, they, they don't have that phonemic awareness. They're, they're sight readers. They've memorized a word, not necessarily be able to pull it apart and decode it. And where we're seeing that also then is when they go to write. They're horrible because they can't write a word. They can't hear the sounds. So we're, I think we're learning, and we have to adjust. And when we know better, we have to do better. And I'm hoping, because we know better, we're doing better, and we'll reflect.
I just have one quick question. So going back to this report card, so do we, do you have any idea what causes such a leap, the eighteen-point swing from third grade to fourth grade, and then the nine percent drop from fourth grade to fifth grade?
So if I address first the big swing, our, I hope it's that they have learned what they need, and so they're, they're growing. Okay? The swing between fourth, fifth, that fourth grade group of kids last year were third graders. And they were fantastic. It's a fantastic, very bright group of kids. They demonstrated that in their SBA scores. They were the highlight of our district, I think, in their SBA scores. It's a great cohort of students, and I'm real pleased to see that that carried on. I actually, my hope is that it would be higher, honestly, at this point. I'm hoping next report card, we're looking at everybody in the P's. That's my hope. I think that we can get there with our plan and our focus. We still have lots of room to grow. We've got a lot of, but we have a good team to guide everybody through it.
Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It's exciting.
After that, it's got such a, there's no, it's never boring here. So we went from like this amazing presentation, and then we're going on to a, not in the classroom type of thing, so. Proposed disposition of the Feller wetlands. And the administration recommends that the board of directors approve and adopt resolutions.
You got to be louder if they can.
Talking to the mic.
Am I?
You're doing it by heart.
Oh, okay. Well, does this get louder? You only hear me. Okay, then it's just my voice. Okay. This is the proposed disposition of the Feller wetlands. The administration recommends that the board of directors approve and adopt resolution fourteen G twenty-two surplus property and intergovernmental transfer resolution, Feller wetlands as presented.
And so we had a, excuse me, we had, we had a, a study session last week with, at which we also had an opportunity for public hearing to hear from our community about their thoughts on the presentation that we've received from our attorney Denise Stifarm on the work she has done, working together with the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, crafting a proposed transfer agreement and the additional agreements of, for easement and, and all of the pieces that go into making the legal work of making the transfer of property. Thomas Woodruff from Washington Fish and Wildlife was not able to be there last night, but he is here tonight. He did send you all a document that was an answer to the questions that you had that we were not able to answer for Fish and Wildlife on our last week meeting. So at this point, we, we have done a lot of work since two thousand sixteen, when we started looking for a partner and Fish and Wildlife stepped forward, working together. We have heard and spoken with and, and allowed the opportunity for the Comish tribe to consider their interests and what they wanted to do, and they, they allowed time to make that consideration and, and have all the discussions that they need to have. And as Mrs. Stifarm noted last week, they determined that this was not the time or the right project for them to take on. But, so we have all of the documents put together. They're all in order. We discussed them in detail again last, last week. And you have been seeing information on this transfer for almost seven years now. And we are at the point where I'm asking the board to take a look at that resolution that we have drafted and adopt that resolution so that we can move forward with the work that happens between our lawyers and the lawyers at Fish and Wildlife to complete the transfer of the wetlands from one governmental agency to another.
Okay, and then I'm going to ask Don, Mr., Dr. LaPere, if you would like to speak before or after or during?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Would you like to?
I'm going to make it a lot shorter than last time.
Okay.
I'm Dr. LaPere, retired dentist, former school board member, and a whole bunch of other stuff that I do. I really hate change, but this makes sense, and the WDFW, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, can get money from the legislature to preserve and maintain the trail system. That doesn't mean they're going to get it, but they can. The North Mason School District cannot get money from Olympia to maintain the trails. It's basic common sense. We can't, we can't, as, I'm, I still consider myself as part of the district, even though I'm not on the board anymore. We can't continue to put money into the trails. Literally, we're taking it from either maintenance for the rest of the buildings or something else to keep the insurance companies happy, that we're not creating a liability down there. So it just, it just makes sense. And again, I hate change, but I can live with this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Oh, okay, okay. Then, uh, am I?
Yeah, do you call for a motion so we can discuss?
Yeah, I was going to ask another question, but I will entertain a motion to, to approve and adopt resolution fourteen G twenty-two surplus property and intergovernmental.
Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution number fourteen G twenty-two surplus property and intergovernmental transfer resolution for the Feller wetlands.
All right. And then any discussion?
I do have some, but I, I don't need to go first.
No, I don't either. If you have it.
I had, there were a couple of things that came up at the public hearing last month that I think were kind of just some open questions that maybe our representative here might be able to address. One, I was curious about the existing MOU that the school district has with the Barnacles and Bees preschool that is using that, the wetlands for their program, and was wondering if WDFW, you know, if there would be any change in process or what that process would look like for that organization to?
Let's ask Tom to come up front, so that when we ask these questions, that you can be heard in the microphone, and we'll put you on the spot. No, I'm kidding.
Yes, thank you.
We promised no, no yelling or embarrassing horrible comments.
I was wondering, essentially, like, what is the, what would the process look like for that nonprofit in particular, but really any in our community that wants to utilize the wetlands?
Yeah, and to refresh your memory, Barnacles and Bees is the outdoor preschool program that uses the restroom and some storage space right now in the museum part of the building, but their program primarily happens outside on the wetlands.
Yeah. First, I guess, first, thank you. Pleasure to be here. I'm Tom Woodruff. I'm the property acquisition supervisor for Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. I've had the pleasure of working with Dana and Denise for over a year. I think I'm the fourth, fourth or fifth, fifth real estate representative involved in this transaction, and we're close. It's been a pleasure to work on the four or five documents we had to work our way through. So in answer to this question with the MOU, we have crafted, and I don't have the list of documents in front of me, but we have crafted an agreement that first and foremost gives the school district preference to use the buildings, both the classroom and the exhibit hall, during school hours. The Barnacles and Bees, Barnacles and Bees, we've talked to. I have not seen that agreement with them, but our goal is to have that building used by the community and the facilities. And we know the bathrooms are critical for use, and intend to keep them open, both during, available during the school hours for the school and at appropriate times for the public. And ideally, we're thinking seven days a week to have those bathrooms, those buildings available to the public.
And so would, like, an organization go through you, or like, what would be the contact? How would it work?
They would go through our wildlife area manager, Katie. It used to be Derek Lowry, who for years was the wildlife area manager for this area. We have a new one with Katie. She would be the go-to for this. She'll be the day-to-day operations for the, this. This is the Union River Unit of the South Puget Sound Wildlife Area.
You just answered my question. Answered my, at least one of them.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Preemptive strike.
Thank you for that answer. There's been some questions that have come up about fees and usage, and I'm wondering if you can provide any insight on whether members of the public would have to pay to access the site?
The members of the public would not have to pay to access the site. The way the state is set up, it used to be that the three resource agencies, Department Natural Resources, Department State Parks, and Department Fish and Wildlife, each had their own separate pass. So you, seeing one of the three facilities, assuming you knew which one you're on, you had to have their specific pass. About a dozen years back, the legislature approved the Discover Pass. What the Discover Pass does is a three-in-one. So if you have a Discover Pass, you can go to State Parks lands, you can go to Department Natural Resource lands, or you can go to Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife lands. Important to note, though, that is basically a parking pass. It's a vehicle pass. So if an individual is walking or biking, or they park not on the resource area, then they don't need the pass. It's not a pass you carry on your person, but it's a pass you put on your vehicle. And if it's, if you don't intend to use the other two entities, then then Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife still does have its, I think they call it a site access pass. And actually, if you buy a hunting license or a fishing license, it comes with it at no charge.
Got a question back there?
I have a question.
I'm, I'm, I know I'm not the only volunteer on the trail, but I'm one of two.
Dr. LaPere, right now only the Board can ask questions at this point in the meeting. Sorry, but afterwards, I am sure that you might stick around and you might be able to get, um, an answer there. Or maybe, um, sorry, um... Did you have another one?
Um, I, I was looking over the agreement. There was a, you know, I don't know necessarily that you'd be able to answer this, but under term and termination, it says if this agreement has not closed by the third annual anniversary of the effective date, then the agreement automatically terminates. And I guess it just kind of was like, whoa, could this take three years to close? Um, that just kind of set off.
Yeah, no.
When I read that, like, boy.
That three-year window probably occurred three times already. But no, we're, we are, we're on the cusp right now. If this is approved here tonight, I've got a tentatively scheduled to go to my commission on the last Friday of the month, which I believe is January twenty-eighth. It will go to our commission on that Friday. If they approve it, I could imagine we could have this matter closed by the end of February.
All right.
Okay, thank you. That's really illuminating. I don't have other questions. I have comments when we're ready to vote.
Well, there you go. Uh, so that was, one of the questions I had is, was this going to be a wildlife area or a unit? Um, and then you said it's a unit of the South Puget Sound.
Wildlife area.
I'm terrible. I wrote it down. South Puget Sound, uh, wildlife area. Um, and then will the name, um, stay, uh, Mary E. Theller Wetland Nature Preserve, or will that change?
I, I, I'm gonna venture to say that that can stay. If typically, yeah, I see no reason that we would change that. I would have to confirm that with people with more power than me, uh, over the water at wildlife areas. But typically, I've been, I've been doing this roughly for thirty years, not all for WDFW. I've been doing this for WDFW for eleven or twelve years. And the practice typically is, if we're buying a property, if we're paying full price or close to it, there are no naming rights. If a property is donated to us, as the case is here, then there are certainly naming rights. I think in this situation, absolutely that that should pass on.
Okay.
I, I can't imagine anybody ch, desiring a change on that.
Yeah, on the thirty-three, when you go on the website and there's the thirty-three, uh, different wildlife areas, um, when you click on them, they boop, 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 and they open up all the units. And when you open all of them and you're like, and this took, you know, I'm like, wow, what's that? And this is this, and I'm like, if this becomes just an area, a hundred and thirty-nine acres, that'd be the smallest wildlife area. So I was suspecting it would be a unit. Um, now, on the advisory committee, um, that, um, I don't really need to know exactly how it looks like, but, um, does that advisory committee then report to the South Puget Sound Advisory Committee?
It is part of.
Yeah.
It is the South Puget Sound Wildlife Area Committee.
So it is that committee?
It is that committee.
Oh, okay, and then, um...
Dana Knowles, who's one that Dana knows, who's one who serves on, I served on one. I might still be on it, but we've got our management plan taken care of, so there's no act of nature.
Okay.
But, but I served on one all, myself. Um, citizens from all different locks, be it horseback, Audubon, uh, uh, sportsman groups, fisherman groups, et cetera, can all ask to be on the committee.
And then that, how many are on there now and how many?
Right now, there's twelve, I think the number is.
Oh, okay.
And it can vary from nine to fifteen. If it gets too big, maybe a little unwieldy, but generally the, it's nine to fifteen will serve on a committee.
And this might be a question that we kind of already know, but I, I've heard people ask it before. Will that advisory committee ever be disbanded or go away? Or, or do you foresee that committee, advisory committee?
No, no, it isn't. It wouldn't be special to Union River Unit. It wouldn't be special to the South Puget Sound Wildlife Area. It's our model. It's what we strive to do to incorporate the public opinion, the public input, into the management of our wildlife areas. If anything, it's building strength, momentum, consistency.
Um, one of the other thoughts I was thinking, and I heard a couple of people, are you looking to grow your wildlife, um, presence as Washington State Wildlife Areas here in this more local area? Or is this just a special thing? You're not just out here looking to take over all of the private lands? Um, but you're here just to see, word that a little bit better. Uh, somebody said, oh, well, maybe they're just coming, and this might be one of all of these other places they want to take over. And I'm like, I don't know what you mean by that, but I think that this came up, and this was a very, this is a special thing, and it wasn't like...
No, and I think it's important to note that the Theller Wetlands is contiguous to property that's already being managed by the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, and actually, it kind of surrounds the Theller Wetlands, so it makes sense to, to be one.
I think the question is, right, is there some overarching goal that WDFW has to acquire more properties? That's essentially what that concern is.
Yeah.
About, about, I was saying, two thousand, I think, two thousand nine, we bought several parcels out here. And it was because they were available, there were willing sellers. We don't buy from anybody but a willing seller. In the eighty-plus years of our agency acquiring since our first parcel, we never buy from anybody less than a willing seller. There were some willing sellers that had nice waterfront properties, correction, nice wetland properties up the coast. We picked up, I'm gonna say about twelve of those, including one from Belfair Water District. We bought their water side of theirs, uh, including one from the Mellon, the Mellon Bank, which was a trustee for the Theller. That was when I first became familiar with Theller, came down toward the property and everything. Uh, so, and there are some other, a few select properties that have come to our, our attention now that, again, willing landowners, uh, we surround them. They would fit in, they protect the salmon habitat, they protect the waterfall habitat. But as far as us actively targeting Belfair, Lynch Cove, this area, no, no, it's not, that's not the way it works. As Dana mentioned, we just wholly surround this one. I don't, I, I think from the history of things, when you hear that in two thousand five, the school tried to dispose of it, two thousand fourteen or sixteen, they tried it again, fourteen I think it was, they're looking for someone. I don't think we came necessarily knocking on the door that, oh, we want this beast. But it makes sense for us to be the logical manager for it. And I appreciate the gentleman's comments that we can get money, we've got managers, property managers, we get, we get, uh, interns, we have restoration experts. This is what we do, is manage and restore wetlands, habitat lands, so it's a good fit.
Thank you for, um, explaining that and then, um, and helping me with, uh, asking the question. I think, uh, when you're buying properties that are families selling it, um, it's a little quieter, but this one holds a lot of, um, emotional and spiritual, um, connections from a lot of different families. So I think that it'll be, I'm excited about it, so.
I wanted to clarify just the, what you said to Leanna, so that I'm understanding. So there's gonna be an advisory group within the South Puget Sound Wildlife Area Advisory Committee? That's, was my understanding, or that, that advisory committee is?
The advisory committee will be the South Puget Sound Wildlife Area.
Okay.
It's not a new.
Advisory Committee.
Nothing new is being created.
No, correct, correct. Nothing new is being created.
And it needs at least three Mason County residents on it, which it meets that criteria, I think.
No, it, it can have, there, there's citizens at large.
Yeah.
And so there could be like a citizen of Mason County on it. Then there can be special representatives, such as North Mason School District or the, uh, South Puget Sound Salmon Enhancement Group or a, some other local representative group, but not just three citizens from Mason County.
In this agreement, when it, on page five, it says, "WDFW will use its best efforts to have at least three residents of Mason County on this committee." So that's what I was referencing.
Correct, and now we probably, we have at least three, counting, uh, Mendy Harlow with the Salmon Enhancement Group, uh, Dana with North Mason School District, and a citizen.
Okay.
So that's currently, the composition does have three from Mason County.
I think that...
And that's, we, we like the balance. We like the diverse input. So, yeah, yeah, we don't, the last thing we would want is to have some kind of advisory community working down here that does not have any Mason County representative or representation.
I think that, um, that it's good to clarify that it's already a standing committee.
Yeah.
Um, because I think there wasn't, people understood that there was gonna be a committee created, and I think that was kind of the thought, um, from other people, um, besides us. But I was like, oh, they're gonna create a committee. Okay, I didn't go telling people that, but that's in my mind. Um, but I think what a concern would be is that there was room on that committee, um, for new people now that the Theller Center, or the, the Theller Wetlands is going to be part, um, or that, that's gonna cover that as a unit, or that committee is gonna be covering that unit, then, um, I know that there's going to be people that want to be on that. And since there's only, uh, twelve people and it could maybe have fifteen.
Oh, yeah.
You may have more people wanting to.
Yeah, there could be somebody from the Theller Center as a representative. So there aren't like a citizen from Mason County, but there's an interest group.
Yeah.
That needs, that desires to be on as a representative.
If you had more people that filled fifteen whole spots, um, would there be a consideration or would you have to turn people away at that point?
Well, that isn't, that isn't my bailiwick or, you know, what I do. Uh, I don't, I don't think it's anything set in stone. They couldn't be beyond fifteen.
Okay.
That's just, you know, it, and, well, I guess it's not a, uh, a whack of, but, uh, it's just the policy or the, the practice that's been of, okay, how can we manage things? What kind of people we get on it? And it's a number that's, okay, let's think nine to fifteen.
Yeah.
Now, if they had the right people, I wanted to say, okay, we, we really want to get two more. There's nothing to say they couldn't go up to seventeen.
Okay.
How does that committee turn over, or does it, people just join it as needed?
Good question. Um, I, I, I don't know the actual term. Uh, I was on the Scatter Creek Advisory Committee, uh, and it's been four years. And a lot of it has to do with developing the management plan, which is where the input's so critical. What kind of uses should be on the property? Are there any seasonal restrictions? What do people want to see done on the property? And once you get a management plan in place, then it's kind of running on its own until, okay, now let's reconvene. Let's see, do we need to update anything? What's working? What isn't? Let's change it. But I guess I've never really thought about if I'm still on that committee or if I've, I've lost my tenure.
So she's on the committee.
Yeah, I have been on the committee since before COVID, so I, we haven't talked about an ending time.
Yeah, I, I, I think as long as people are active and want to remain on it, once they're on it, I, I, but they must allow for turnover. I just don't think it's a term kind of thing.
Does everybody always come to the meetings, or is there?
No.
Out of twelve, you get seven?
Well, it depends, you know, because of the circumstances, we've had some Zoom meetings more recently than we've had in-person meetings, just because people weren't doing in-person meetings. Um, but they, they've been trying to get back to that, so, um, but I, the, the meetings that I've been to in person didn't have everybody that was on the roll call there necessarily. Different places.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we met at Still, Stilla Guamish, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Down there, um, and we were going to, right before COVID, we were going to go tour, um, McNeil Island.
Oh, wow.
Oh.
And we didn't get to go because of COVID. That would have been really very interesting.
I've been trying to get out there on a tour myself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah, and, you know, because that's part of what we were making potential decisions about how they manage that, so.
And if there was ever either an issue or a hot topic that came up, the wildlife area manager would be informed, and they would convene a meeting, most certainly. Like, if somebody was out here running around on airboats, for example, maybe that's not a good idea. And so they would convene to address, do we want to allow airboats? Or is that something we should not have in this wildlife area unit?
So currently, um, for people at home, the South Puget Sound Wildlife Area has six units of Big Beef Creek, Lake Conaman, I guess, so. Is that, um, Nisqually, Skoomish, South Puget Sound, and Union River, uh, Wildlife, uh, Unit? Is that what they call them? And then if this goes, uh, through tonight, it would be the seventh.
This would, it would be part of the Union River Unit.
It would be part of the Union River Unit.
Correct, it's not its own unit. It'd be incorporated into it. And that's why earlier when you said a hundred and thirty-nine acres, I believe the Theller property entitled in total might be a hundred and thirty-nine, but then if you add it with our other holdings down here as part of the Union River,
Yeah.
then it becomes more.
Well, that makes sense, but that's even, this, this is a rabbit hole that I have never been down. So when I got into it, opening, 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 like a Christmas tree, yeah, like, ch, 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 ch. I'm like, wow, I didn't even, I didn't even know many of these places, so that's, that's really cool. And maybe I should, uh, know more about these things, so. Um, that, I don't have any other comments or questions, um, anybody else?
Would it be fair to say that regarding the acquisition of property, that you have no Putin ambitions?
Correct, correct, that would be fair. Please, say that.
That's all I got, just some claimant.
Yes, yes.
On the record. Anybody else?
So I just had a quick question. Since Theller is going to be incorporated with the rest of your guys' property, would there be any conflicts with the, the contract that, as opposed to the rest of the property? Would there be any time where it would need to be treated, uh, need to be treated differently because of the contract? Or will it mostly be treated the same as all the surrounding properties?
Do you mean the will or the, what's the contract?
It, it, it definitely will have extra consideration because for one, it's got two large buildings on it and smaller storage buildings. The rest of the wildlife area doesn't, except for a couple duck blinds, uh, and, and the pier, the, the walkway. Uh, it also has the reversionary language, which directs that we will do this. And I will mention that our agency holds several properties that have been donated, or devised, actually, in a will to us that have reversionary language. And we've been managing these for decades just fine. We, just like the school district understands, it has to be used for athletic and recreational purposes. We know that, taking it, we will continue that. Whereas the rest of the air, the wildlife area, sure, we could do, you know, we could, you know, do other things to it. This property, we'll always have to respect that.
Thank you for mentioning that you have other properties with reversionary clauses. That's interesting.
That's very cool.
That's my question I had.
Yeah, any, any other comments or questions from either one of you?
I'm greatly relieved.
We're not, we're not done yet, no. Uh, anything over here?
No, I, um, good. He answered all my questions.
Yes, uh, very thorough, and, uh, so thank you, thank you for that. And then, um, something I should have did at the beginning of the meeting, and I think I should do it before we, um, make our decision here, is to excuse, uh, Laura from the meeting. I know that she would love to have been here today, but she, um, had a prayer engagement, so.
And I'd, I'd do three things. I think, I, I don't think I did the first one already, but thank you all for serving. As a former educator, the school board is a critical link in the chain to successful school district. So thank you for serving. I know it takes time. I also want to, uh, as a former educator, recognize that this third grade, I learned early on that reading, if you get in the fifth, sixth, ninth grade and you're behind X number of years in your reading, you've got a long, tough road ahead of you. If you can catch this reading early on, it's just a world of difference. So I really applaud them and support that. And I'd like to thank the Dr. LaPere.
LaPere, yeah.
For his wisdom and support of this, this effort. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodruff.
Before we vote, I would like to make another comment.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to, you know, before we vote, I wanted to thank, um, Dr. LePere, who's walking out here, and, um, other folks who've commented on this over the years, not just at the hearing last week, but, I mean, this has been just a years-long process, and we've had other hearings. And I want to say that I appreciate everybody's, including Mr. Van Buskirk's, Buskirk's comments. There's a lot of passion, we've heard it all, um, and I just, you know, in particular with Ken, I do thank him and other members of our public for being so passionate for this long about the trails and the issues surrounding the trails. Um, his questions about the 2012 trail breach, I think, were addressed at the last hearing. And, you know, if we turn over this property to WDFW, that really becomes their purview, and they may be under, will be likely under certain restrictions, and that may not go the way that I know he is wanting it to go. And his question about further, you know, will other culverts be reverted to Fish Passage? Um, that's really ultimately not what we are about. And before we vote, I wanted to say that, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers, and that's why we're here, that, um, we cannot be utilizing our resources, both financially, but also in regards to his comment about setting up our own separate advisory committee. Again, that's resources that would be pulling from us to manage with our time and create something like that. And ultimately, I personally feel as though we just can't be devoting those types of resources to this place anymore, as, um, disappointing as that may be to a lot of people, but we have a priority.
Very, uh, moving, a moving forward priority, yeah. And Morgan, you said you had it.
Well, all I would like to say is the students are, I mentioned, we had a meeting today, I talked to them, and the students are really looking forward to, um, the trails being, um, being restored, being cleared out, being repaired, and, um, just the entire property being fixed up. And I'd also like to thank everyone that has provided their time and effort into, um, keeping the trails clear and keeping them handicapped, accessible, and all those other things. And I know there are multiple students that are looking forward to being able to utilize those trails once they've been, um, uh, res, brought, brought up to, uh, condition. And, um, they did, they did mention, they, some of them watched the hearing, and they, um, from last week, and they also, some of them did, um, mention that they would think some sort of oversight would be nice, like, almost like a correct congressional oversight committee. But, uh, I definitely understand if we don't have the resources to do it, I think it'd be a good idea. But, um, if we don't have the resources or the time, um, I'm, I am happy that we have at least some representation on this advisory committee, although it may not be ideal. I am happy that we at least have some say in this, um, this amazing resource that we have out here in Belfair, and I'm looking forward to seeing all the good that will come of this.
Yeah, I, on your comment about the trails and safety, I wanted to add, you know, that that is a really important thing to highlight, and that, you know, with my involvement with this Barnacles and Bees preschool, I can tell you that there's a lot of unsafe conditions that are there, and that, you know, volunteers have had to kind of step up and manage, because the school district can't step forward and do that, and it's really sad. Um, and, you know, could necessitate moving it if it were to continue being with the school district. Um, so just thank you for that comment. And I also want to make sure we're highlighting this reversionary clause, like, it is a bummer that there's not more oversight, but I think that this agreement is really strong, and that we do have this legal standing now, if it does go forward, that we can always fall back on, and if they're not doing what, how, what we want them to do, we have this legal standing to litigate that if we need to, in the future.
Um, actually, maybe it's not what we'd want.
I know, but-
Per the, the, uh, laws of the will, uh, but I would like, and I'll keep it, uh, short, but I would like to say that maybe when, when you mentioned that it might not be ideal with another advisory, I think that the people that are on the current advisory committee, um, have knowledge, um, and heart uh, for this specific piece of land. And so I am, uh, I feel comfortable and happy, um, actually, that those people are on there. Uh, especially Dana, she knows it inside and out. Um, and I know that she's not somebody to sit, sit back and be quiet if somebody decided to say this, this, and this as the advisory, and she'd be like, no, 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 it's like this, you know, she would, she would step in. And I know that there's going to be probably other people that want to be on there, and that'll be really exciting. I might even look forward to looking into that myself, so.
So.
Um, that is pretty cool.
I was going to say, you know, first, I want to really thank everybody that's been maintaining and volunteering to maintain the trails.
Yes.
Um, people out there volunteering their personal time to be out there and making sure it's safe. And this will, you know, I'm sure those, a lot of those folks are going to continue to help out where they can, but this gives us another set of hands to maintain those trails. Um, you know, I've talked to a lot of folks out there, and it seems very positive, um, of this going on. Um, and for the fact that if somebody wants to step up, it sounds like there's some openings on that committee to volunteer and step up and let their voice be heard. Um, and it would, I think, really help, and it sounds like WDFW is willing to listen, so.
Very good, absolutely. Well, I think that we have had a very good conversation here today, and we have a motion on the floor. And, um, um, so, um, basically, I, um, uh, just calling. Uh, and we're going to do a roll call vote, um, uh, it was, um, asked that we do, and it is actually something, something like this, that we, um, love to do it that way. So, uh, roll call vote, uh, for, uh, for, uh, signify by saying aye, and we'll start over here with Eric.
Aye.
Aye. Arla?
Aye.
Leanna?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and, uh, any opposed? Not hearing any, this, uh, passes. This is, uh, fourteen G twenty-two surplus property of the intergovernmental transfer resolution, Feller Wetlands, to the WDFW. And thank you, uh, with the big smile and the, and warmth in our hearts, and, and your, the community, the community is watching.
Thank you.
Good luck to you and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, do you have cards that you can leave behind with Jackie maybe?
And I can also offer, someone wants to know more about the, uh, wildlife area advisory committees, that I do have, uh, it's like ten, twelve pages that really spell the-
It sounds like Leanna's really into this now.
I am a longtime spiritual connection to the Feller, so.
Thank you.
Well, I just happened to grab, well, you already have.
Just right, I already have one, but thank you.
Very good.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a great evening, go Seahawks.
Yes.
Well, and like I, uh, had suggested before, how, um, we jump from section to section on our, um, our agenda here, and each thing means so much. Um, and this one, um, is exciting, and this, uh, will be the, uh, one year that I have been the board president. And I'm not going to go on and on, but I just want to say thank you. Um, I have learned so much, um, that, it's stuff that I knew, but it was little things that I needed to fill gaps, where I was like, wait a minute, you know, like, shouldn't I know this, and shouldn't I be doing more? And, no, that's actually for the president to do, or the vice president. And I have loved being, uh, being the president and, um, working with Arla. Uh, and she brings an amazing, um, ness to the board. Her everything is, uh, her background and everything, and the way that she asks questions, and she's not afraid to ask them, so. Um, she has been my, um, my right and my left hand, she's been amazing, so. Anyway, we are, uh, on to the board reorganization and election of a board president. Um, and this is where I will call for nominations for the office of board president to serve for a one-year term. One or more board members will be nominated, uh, to serve as president. To be eligible for election, the nomination must have a second. Once nominations are closed, I will call for a roll call vote of all elected board members. The first nominee to receive three votes shall be elected president. Um, and so I, um, I don't know if I'm taking this from somebody, but I would like to, uh, or to nominate, uh, somebody for the president, and that, um, and I can start that now, right? Okay, I would like to, um, nominate Arla for president. And that's my nomination.
I second that.
Can you second that?
Madam Chairman, I would move that we bring the nominations to a close and, uh, elect Arla by acclamation.
Okay, and so, do I need to gavel that?
It sounds like we need a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on that.
Okay, so we are going to roll call vote, and, um, I will start over here again with, uh, Eric. You just say who you vote for.
I vote for Arla to be the next president of the North Mason School Board.
Okay, and I, Leanna Kratzser, am voting for Arla to, uh, be the, uh, next school board president.
I vote for Arla, I think that she's the best candidate on the list.
All right, and then, Arla, would you like to vote for yourself?
I don't think I can, right?
You can, actually.
Okay, I'll vote for myself.
All right, well, um, and then, uh, the installation of the president, uh, the gavel and chairperson responsibilities shall immediately be granted to the newly elected president, and I'm going to hand you this season gavel.
And I want to say thank you, Leanna, for serving this past year. It's been really great to learn alongside you, and I've been very appreciative of just your time here and your support and loveliness. Um, so we are at the election of board vice president. The president will call for nominations for this office to serve for a one-year term. Same as before, one or more board members will be nominated. To be eligible for election, the nomination must have a second. Once nominations are closed, the board president will call for a roll call vote of all elected board members, and the first nominee to receive three votes shall be elected vice president. Um, I will open the floor for any nominations.
Madam President, I nominate Eric Youngberg for vice president.
Any other nominations?
And I second that.
Great. So, hearing no other nominations, I will do the roll call vote, I'll start over here.
I'm for people for Eric Youngberg.
And, uh, Leanna, for Eric, for vice president?
Arla for Eric Youngberg for vice president.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to vote for yourself?
I'll vote for myself as well.
I always encourage that.
Yes, okay, so, the vote stands, and Eric is our new vice president, yay.
Good candidates with good self-image.
I would just like to say, before we move on, though, um, I am not able to vote, you def, you both definitely have my full support, and I'm looking forward to meeting and working with you guys throughout the rest of, uh, my term. I can't say the same thing for Audrey, but.
I think that was well said, so I'm not really sure how to up that, um, besides the slight diss. But, um, I also really think it'd be fun to work with you guys, and I think you guys are great candidates for both positions.
Thank you, I'm very excited. We are at the superintendent update. Wow, we've really done a lot today. Um, budget status update, I think is first, unless Dana, you want to reorganize?
No, that's fine, we'll, we'll follow the order here.
Okay, good evening and happy holidays, everybody.
Yes.
And it is my privilege to be given the first presentation to this newly organized board. So congratulations to Eric and Arla for your new positions. So, um, I don't know if you've had a chance to look through the documents in our, um, budget status. Jackie, I'm seeing November there, and I don't know if you have the right page, because, um, we're looking at the one as of December, we should be looking at the one as of December fifteenth. Oh, no?
It is.
Yeah, I just wrote in my notes, I wrote on the December line, so I have lots of writing on the December line that reflect what you're seeing up there, I'm sorry about that confusion. So we're going to start with the other funds, beginning with the capital projects fund. And these are budget statuses as of November thirtieth, so yes, that's correct, that's our November fund balance. So in our capital projects, our fund balance is four hundred sixty-seven thousand nineteen dollars. You notice there's an increase there of, uh, almost sixty-four thousand dollars. Uh, what that is, is, um, we collected sixty-three thousand dollars from, um, impact and mitigation fees for the new apartment project that's being constructed in Belfair, Belfair View Apartments. Um, that was, um, phase, our phase one payment, uh, um, for the one hundred twenty-six apartments in phase one. And we'll be seeing a phase two, um, sometime in the future for another one hundred eight apartments.
Excuse me, what was that, the figure again for those apartments?
Um, there's a hundred twenty-six apartments in phase one, and a hundred eight apartments in phase two.
And what are we getting for that?
Uh, five hundred dollars per unit. There's also a hundred forty-five homes being built up and above those apartments. So in the future, we'll receive those mitigation fees as well.
That's incredible.
Do you know if that's, uh, comparable with other districts, how things go in other districts?
I can answer that. Um, that is comparable within Mason County. Um, throughout the state, it's very wide, it's not like when, you know, when I got my master's degree in California, the state sets those dollars, and so it is uniform across the district, or across the state. In Washington, um, each individual district has to negotiate each time with each individual builder for those funds, and you have to negotiate amount that also the county planning department will approve. So, what will fly in Mason County is different than might fly in North King County. So, there is a vast difference between what different counties are charging, um, right now. In King County, they are charging upwards of ten thousand dollars per unit, so much greater than we are. Um, in Kitsap County, the average is around a thousand dollars per unit. Ours for this negotiation was five hundred, which had increased from previous dollars. Um, and we are working with the county towards increasing that as we negotiate with each new, uh, development that happens, so that we get to parity, at least with those, um, builders who, with whom we're nearby, but without making too drastic a jump all at once.
And there's a small number-
I was not aware of that.
I know, that's-
Balance, wow, imbalance.
There's a small number of homes being built in Allen, and, um, our agreement with them is seven hundred fifty dollars per unit.
Oh, seven fifty in Allen, that's interesting.
Thank you, Dan, for clarifying that.
So, um, in our debt service fund, at the end of November, our fund balance was four hundred seventy thousand six hundred sixty-five. Um, now you, if you remember last board meeting, I said, look for a big decrease, because we had a bond payment due. We had a voted debt and a non-voted debt payment, and so, um, that's a two- debt and a non-voted debt payment. And so, um, that's a two million dollar plus decrease because of those bond payments that we made. Uh, our ASB fund balance at the end of November was four hundred sixty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars. That's a decrease of about twenty-two thousand dollars from the previous month, um, related to ASB activities and purchases. Our transportation vehicle fund balance at the end of November was five hundred seven thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars. A little bit of an increase there from interest that we've earned. Uh, let's look at the enrollment. Now, we do have December, uh, beginning of December enrollment. Um, you can see that, um, you know, we now have four months of enrollment showing. And then on the far right, we have our average. So, we have the budgeted enrollment and the actual enrollment. So, we had budgeted two thousand, for two thousand two hundred sixty point four students. And, uh, our December enrollment, which we do, um, the first Monday of December, um, was, or the first school day of, of December, was two thousand two hundred sixty-six point eight students. So, about five students less than at the beginning of November. And, you know, I think, you know, I think about this and, you know, we have one day that's count day and we've had a lot of illnesses and we're still having those as, you know, Mrs. Collins mentioned tonight, some of our staff are, are ill. There's a lot of that going around. So, if we have a lot of kids absent on account day, that's our count. And so, that could possibly, you know, cause a little bit of a, some dip or incline. So, um, as these apartments are, you know, being leased out, we might see our enrollment go up, so...
Yeah, we've already had some new families request enrollment for, after the holidays.
Were they already local or are they from out of state?
I don't have the answer to that.
Well, if they're requesting enrollment, then they wouldn't have been here. You know what I mean? If they're requesting enrollment, they wouldn't have been...
I mean, if they were out of, I mean, out of, like, state or larger...
We don't know that yet, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kind of yet to be seen, although, you know, you could assume that with that number of, that many apartments, uh, being open for lease, that we would have families with children that are school age that would move in, but...
I hope so.
You know, it's yet to be seen.
And you'll remember that, the, looking at our demographic history, the number that our demographers use for North Mason School District right now per unit to predict is about point four students per unit.
Hmm, so agreed.
That's interesting.
Okay.
So, as, you know, with my experience as a principal, there's a lot of movement in and out over the holidays. Um, over winter break, it's a opportune time for families to make that transition to a new school. So, we'll see what happens after winter break.
That'll be pretty exciting.
So, let's go ahead and move on to our general fund, our dashboard. So, you may have noticed that I've changed the format a little bit to make things a little bit larger and easier to see. I've broken some of the reports down and put some of the graphics on single slides. Um, so, starting with our revenues at the end of November, um, our total revenues received were at twenty-one point nine percent of what we had budgeted or projected. Um, our projected amount was twenty-three point three seven at this time. So, we're a little bit below what we projected. Um, our, our revenues from local sources, um, for the period ending November 30th, were at thirty-eight point seven seven percent. We had projected that we'd be at forty point three four from local sources. From state sources, our actual, um, revenues were twenty-one point five six percent at the end of November and we had projected that we'd be at twenty-two point twenty-two percent. And our federal revenues were at six point three four percent. We had projected we'd be at seventeen point five four. And as I mentioned last month, um, we're below our projection there because of some of our federal programs. There's a new system called EGMS, which we're using to manage those federal grants. And we're getting that up and running and we just had our, you know, that consolidated grant approved a few weeks ago and now we're beginning to do claims on those programs. So, we should start seeing revenues in those areas in the upcoming months. Our top ten sources of revenue are, um, apportionment. You can see there four point nine two million so far. And property taxes, those are from our, our local levy, one point five million. Um, just jumping down a little bit, you can see we've collected some state forest money, a hundred twenty-seven thousand four hundred eleven. And timber excise tax money, you can see there, about twenty-four thousand. I mentioned investments. Um, we do try to, when we have, um, cash in different funds, we invest that through this, um, county treasurer so that we can get some return on that. So, you can see already to date, this fiscal year, that we've earned almost twenty thousand in our investments. So, and those are in the, this in particular is just the, um, general fund. Uh, let's move on to the next slide, please. This is a comparison, um, total revenues, budgeted versus, um, projected, um, year-to-date versus our current year-to-date. So, you can see that tall, tall bar shows that we have, um, budgeted for a total of just over forty million dollars for the fiscal year. And, um, we had projected that we'd be a little under ten million dollars right now and we're a little bit below what we had projected, but not far. And again, I, I believe, um, those federal revenues will close that gap as we continue through the year. Um, the next slide, please. This is revenues by source, local, state, and federal and other. Other, so minuscule, it's hard to see there, but, um, just to compare our revenues by source prior years to this year. So, you can see the past few years, our local revenues, that's our levy. So, you can see, you know, that difference there and how having that levy does make a difference for us with, um, about one and a half million collected so far. You can see our state revenues there. Most of that is apportionment and our federal revenues compared to previous years. And going on to the next slide. This is our revenues by source, again, but, um, our projected year-to-date versus our current, our actual year-to-date. So, you can see, um, our local, it's pretty close to what we had projected. Our state, just under. And our federal, um, below, you know, by, by more than, you know, we, we might, um, want to see. But again, once we get those, um, federal grant claims entered and we get those funds and they'll come in as part of our apportionment, we'll see that change there. And then we're gonna move on to our expenditures, beginning with the, uh, year-end fund balance. So, you can see, um, our projected year-end fund balance as a percent of our budgeted expenditures is at eight point seven six percent. And that's right in where we want to be for that. Our total expenditures year-to-date, um, we're at twenty-three point two three percent. And we had projected that we would have expended twenty-eight point two six percent. Again, this is through the end of November. Um, for salaries and benefits, our actual to-date expenditures are at twenty-four point two eight percent. And we have projected that we'd be at twenty-four point five five. So, we're right along what we had projected. And then, our basic education actual is twenty-two point four eight percent. And we had projected we'd be at twenty-eight point five four. Our top ten expenditures by program are in basic education. You can see four point two six nine million. Our district-wide support at one point four million. Special education, state at nine hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred seventy-seven. And transportation at four hundred eighty-one thousand three fifty-five. And you can see the rest there as, uh, you can see also that the top ten expenditures by program make up ninety-three percent and a little bit more of our total expenditures. Now, let's go on to the next slide, please. So, this is our total expenditures, um, budget projected year-to-date versus our current or actual year-to-date. So, you can see that we had budgeted around forty-one million in expenditures for the fiscal year. And as of the end of November, we, um, had expended just under ten million. And you can see that we had projected a little more than ten million. So, just to see where we are in terms of what we were anticipating. And then, the next slide, please. This is our expenditures by object. So, we have salaries for certificated staff, classified or employee benefits. That's both certificated and classified lumped together, supplies and purchase services. So, this is, um, again, looking at prior, prior years compared to this current year. And as you can see, there are some differences in our expenditures for salaries. And I've mentioned that before, that there's been a salary increase across the state that state had provided school districts for educators. And that has made up most of it. Why there's that change there. And let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. Um, this is expenditures by object, our projected year-to-date versus our current. Again, um, it's the same objects as before, but this is our projected versus our actual, not looking at prior years, but our, what we had anticipated where we'd be at the end of November. So, you can see we're, see we're really close to what we had projected for certificated salaries. A little under for classified, a little bit over for, uh, benefits. And those are really hard things to get that exact amount, you know, pinpointed, but we're pretty close. Our supplies, you can see that big difference there. And, um, in, you know, Vietnam, my predecessor had created the budget and it might have been that she was thinking, you know, we would still have a big demand on supplies for COVID-related expenses and whatnot. I'm not entirely sure. One thing I, I mentioned at the last meeting was that I was going to a training. So, Forecast Five is the, the software that we use for this dashboard. I participated in a training last week. I learned some things on how I can, um, not change our, you know, amount that we budgeted, but look at how we can, if we see variances like this, how we can make adjustments. So, if there's money that's budgeted, over-budgeted in one area, we can look at that and see how, if there's something we can do to adjust that. So, that is something that I'll be exploring between now and our next board meeting.
What about this purchased services? What...
Purchased services would include things like, um, any kind of, um, like maintenance, repair work services like that, as well as, um, services for, um, for example, OT and PT, um, speech language therapists that were contracted with to provide teletherapy, those kinds of things. So, it really varies.
Do you know why we're a little bit over on that?
Um, we have had some maintenance, things come up, um, some projects. As a matter of fact, you know, like, we won't have water here this coming Monday and Tuesday because there's some work being done on our water system up here. So, it's things like that that were unanticipated. I do also know that Vietnam had set us, you know, it's, it's, it's called capacity. So, there's capacity built in the budget to allow for those kind of contingencies. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our month-end balances. So, you can see that trend across the, the year. And if you look at November, this is through November, our, um, fund balance in our general fund was at two million five hundred twenty thousand three hundred sixty-six. It is a, a, you know, it's a big drop from the previous month, although you can also see it follows that trend, that pattern that, um, we saw the previous year. And again, it's related to how our apportionment is distributed across the year. That's part of it. Part of it is we haven't captured those federal dollars through those grants in the way we, you know, we, we still have, um, the ability to do as the year goes on. And you can see in August, if you look all the way over to August, that our budgeted year-end fund balance is three point two four million. And we're projected to be just over that at three point five million. So, the projection is looking like, you know, good and healthy for us. And let's move on to the financial summary. On this one, I, you know, I, I look mostly on the right side because that's the current year. There is the prior year to compare to. Um, and, um, I remember last month, I think, Arla, you had asked me about that, um, budgeted amount that's showing in parentheses, that three hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars. And I said, "Yeah, I've been wondering about that, too." Now, I want to learn more. If I know what, what is that? That has to do with our, um, non-voted debt. So, in our general fund, we set aside money to transfer into our debt service fund to pay that non-voted debt. Because we're paying the non-voted debt out of our general fund because it wasn't voted. It's not part of our debt service fund. But the money's transferred into the debt service fund just for a, a couple hours or a day so that the county treasurer can make that bond payment. So, Vietnam had, um, really done this to the dollar, how much we will owe based on our bond schedule for our non-voted debt for this year. So, um, you can see to the left of that, that two hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred thirty-one, that's what I transferred in November to pay our November bond payment for that non-voted debt. There's still another forty-six thousand dollars that we'll be paying at the end of May, and that will be the rest of it. So, that's why there was that budgeted amount of three hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred sixty-three. So, um, in June, we should see that those numbers match because I'll have transferred all of that money into the general fund. And then it basically goes out right away to pay that debt. And the last slide, um, you know, it's again looking at revenues and expenditures side by side, prior year-to-date versus current year-to-date. And you can see the revenues, um, that, that local tax, that's the levy dollars, and that is a significant, um, source of revenue for us, um, as compared to last year when we weren't collecting the levy dollars. And you can see, again, the, uh, state general education, special education, and federal special, uh, revenues compared to last year. And you can see the expenditures comparing, uh, this current year and to date to last year at, at the end of November. So, it's, it's to date. Okay, so, that concludes the budget presentation. Um, I welcome any questions that you might have.
To be think, I mean, what are your thoughts on the deficit and just, you know, between the expenditures and revenue and whether we can close that? Um, I know we had it last year as well. And it looks like our ending fund blank, balance is, the current year-to-date right now is, like you said, higher than our prior year-to-date, but, you know, how can we make it so that we don't see red?
No, that's a good question and I'll try my best to answer. So, we had anticipated to see a decrease in our fund balance. And, you know, our, our fund balance, you know, it's, it's not always good to have an excessive fund balance. You really want to kind of have it within that range. And for us, you know, our, our goal is to have it between eight and ten percent of our, um, budgeted expenditures. So, we're still within that range, but we did anticipate that we would have that drop and that, that was planned and budgeted. So, um, that, um, could change based on an increase in enrollment because as we have an increase in enrollment, our apportionment increases. That could also change based on grants that we are pursuing and whether we receive those grants or not. But, um, that is one that grant opportunities come up that we didn't budget for. So, there might be some grant opportunities that could, um, make a difference in our overall fund balance by the end of the year as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dan?
No.
Okay, folks.
Okay, folks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We're now at the teaching and learning update.
We are. And I included in the board packet, the entire set of deck of slides that we produce when we do a thought exchange for you to review and examine. This thought exchange that we did was our first one in probably a series that will help us narrow down some input and some thinking from our community members as we define what does a North Mason graduate need to look like? And then how we will use that to update our strategic planning tools. So that the board's direction for the district can provide some guidance for that work. Like that we were hearing about from Belfair tonight about the work that they're doing for kids. So Jackie, I think it is interesting to note, if you go ahead and slide on through, what we asked was what skills and knowledge does a North Mason graduate need to be successful in our community and begone beyond? And what do you think needs to be the values of that graduate? And it's interesting, although we would like to see more numbers, we've had some thought exchanges with more individuals responding and some with less. It was interesting that of those who responded, 42% are community members who don't have children in our schools and did have something to say. And I think that's really positive that we heard that. We also heard from about as many students and as staff members, and that was also really helpful. And we're going to keep bugging the students to respond to these as they get more specific as well. When you move down to the, the word cloud, of course, North and Mason are going to be big words when we're talking about North Mason. And we're asking people to write sentences about a North Mason graduate. But other things that we really need, things that really jumped out in multiple pieces response, people's responses, as well as those that were highly rated by other individuals were the words respect and accountability. That people are responsible and that, you know, that, that they know, they have the skills their employers are going to need. And as you move on to the following slide that we highlight, the highest, the thought, highest rated thoughts, thoughts that were submitted by people in our community or students. And then we had the highest ratings by those people who rated each other's thoughts. And so I think that it's really interesting that the first one is be respectful of their peers and everyone involved in the school or community and understand and accept accountability for those actions. Those things align with the work that we did several years ago with our community, asking them to define our pillars for North Mason, which include be responsible, be kind. And, and so it's really interesting to see that that, that thinking still carries through. And that they need to know how to critically think for themselves and to be understanding and compassionate people. And that person put a lot of stuff in that statement because those are kind of really broad spectrum of what you might expect in defining a person. But those are two very important things. And it's that idea almost of kind of soft skills, not needing to know specific data so much, being able to quote what happened on a certain date in history. But being able to look at information and determine the value of that information and whether I really want to use that in my decision-making. And being able to interact compassionately and successfully with other people. So I think those are things we'll keep kind of needling down on some of our questions to get some more details. And then that piece about effective communication. You know, one of the things, although our students and particularly are very skilled in social media and using devices and tools to communicate, that doesn't necessarily mean they have effective communication skills. So we'll have to further define what does effective communication skills to be able to be successful in the world. But I think we have some really good ideas, starting with what our community shared there. And as we move forward, and, and you should go through the, the report, there are some additional thoughts that are shared. And, you know, more specifically to the word, just what is North Mason? And what is, what do we mean when we talk about respect? And what do we mean when we talked about responsible? What does it mean to talk about people at work? Or dealing with differences and doing things like problem solving and considering the perspectives of others and being prepared for a job? I think we have really thoughtful responses and a good place to start with the next step of our questioning for our community. So you've had an opportunity to look through everything. Did you have questions or thoughts or?
Well, I was one of the like 83 that did it.
Good job!
And it's just really well organized. I really, or 82. I really like that we're doing this and I'm excited about moving forward with our strategic planning work with tools like this. And hopefully we can get more.
Yeah. And we'll start by now, now that we've shared it with you, we'll share this with the whole community and say, okay, this is what we heard. We have more questions. We hope more of you are going to answer this time or rate other people's thoughts or both.
Yeah, it's really organized in such a way where it's just easy to use and it's interesting. I, I went through and read every single one, just, and you don't have to. It kind of gives you outs. And this, so that you don't feel like you're just sitting there all day. But it's kind of fun to see, to see those thoughts come forth and to vote on them.
Yeah. And we didn't see it as much in this survey as in some of the others. But toward the end of the slide deck, you have a couple of slides that have Venn diagrams. And it is kind of interesting. If, if you agreed strongly with the side B, the green circle, then you can see how people rated some other thoughts that kind of agree with you on that. Or if you're on that blue circle, how did other people who rated that statement really high, like you did, agree or disagree with other things? And I think that's helpful to, for people to kind of see what other people are thinking. And the breadth of what people are thinking in our community.
Oh, yeah. What's interesting about that too, is that middle portion, right? Where they say if you,
That sweet spot.
If this person disagrees with this side, but here is where they, where they and that other person voted similarly. That is really important for us to dial into as we move forward with how we talk about the work that we do. And being able to like find that sweet spot where like, hey, we all can agree on this. So let's just focus on that, you know?
Thank you. Yeah.
I have to say, I'm really impressed how this is laid out. I love how, was this automatically generated by the program?
We can generate further, deeper down and ask it to do different things. But this is the automatic organization of responses that the AI does without you giving it more specific parameters about how you want it to organize.
That's impressive.
Isn't it great?
Really good. Yeah. I like how it's laid out, very clean looking. The only thing I would say is maybe if there would be a way that in the graphs and in the word cloud, if we could exclude North Mason next time.
Or graduate, like words that.
Or graduate, where these words, they're almost guaranteed to be in it. Because I would be interested to see then how, because with that out of the equation, how would the other things then change? But other than that, I think this is great. I'm looking forward to seeing what's next. And I'll definitely try to push this more with some of the students, seeing how it turned out.
Yeah.
That's a very good comment. That was really cool.
Are there any other thoughts on the thought exchange?
No, I think it's very cool. It's really nice.
Okay. We are at upcoming board letter columnists, looking ahead. Eric is up for December. John, you're in January. Eliana, you're in February. Laura will be in March and I am up in April. So next we have the legislative representative report, and that is me. I wanted to, first of all, say that, you know, Eric, Laura and I attended the WASTA conference in Spokane last month. And I think later during the Good of the Order, we'll, you know, Eric and I can share more of our thoughts on that. It was a great conference overall. One of the things that I took away from it was really, they had a couple sessions where the legislative reps, they gathered us all together and really like showed us how to, you know, what to do and what to be looking for. And that was really helpful for me and just kind of orienting myself. You know, I've been the ledge rep since whatever July, but there hasn't, we haven't been in session. And so as session opens at the legislature in Olympia, it's going to be pretty exciting. And I'm looking forward to, you know, expanding my wings in that area. So I wanted to share that WASTA did release, and this is, was after general assembly in August. Everybody had, every school board had a vote in, in voting on what WASTA's top priorities would be this upcoming session. And John and I both, we took turns and were the like delegates for North Mason. And the priorities that rose to the top, I won't, I have a PDF, but I won't read this all in full. I'll just say what they were. WASTA will basically lobby for and advocate for the legislature to meet the requirements for special ed. You know, by more equitably funding what, what we need to, to serve our students, investing fully in mandatory services, expanding access to inclusionary practices, removing artificial caps, which I think is a really interesting piece, eliminating application penalties and recognizing that costs vary from district to district. Another priority is providing the needed resources for ample equitable and stable education. Because school districts are expected to implement all aspects of Washington's program of basic education, including graduation requirements. In order to effectively do this, you know, we, schools must have more qualified adults in classrooms and buildings. So this is really about recruiting and retaining the best staff, including building administrators and having compensation be equitable across all positions. So WASTA is asking the legislature to stabilize district operations and program obligations, equitably fund staff and programs based on student need and closing any opportunity and achievement gaps, advancing career tech ed programming and working to close regionalization factor gaps between adjacent districts, which is huge for us. One thing that rose to the top, which I think they were saying wasn't necessarily so high before, but feeding students. This focus on, you know, learning cannot occur when students are hungry and having school meal programs be, be universally free and nutritious has become a priority. Constructing safe and healthy schools. When students feel safe, they're more likely to have academic success. So asking the legislature to protect students and staff by securing physical, social and emotional safety. And then the last one was transport each and every student. And many students and families rely on school district transportation. The real cost of this requires an update to the student transportation allocation formula. We ask the legislature to provide equitable access to basic ed by covering all the costs related to student transportation, which we know that there are gaps there. So those are WASTA's priorities and I'll just leave it at that. Dana and I will be attending the Day on the Hill in February. And we'll be meeting with legislators and it should be pretty exciting. I think it's a long session this year. So they're meeting for longer.
I believe it's 160 days.
Yeah. That's my, end of my ledge report, unless there were any questions? Anybody? Okay. So we are at assurance of organizational performance and policy review. We're at the monitoring reports, which we evaluate, you know, each one once a year at least. So we are ER five budget execution. Dana has prepared a monitoring report that was included in our packet. Do I hear a motion to, is that what I do?
Yeah, but recommend that you find.
Yes. Do I hear a, a motion? I will entertain a motion for recommending that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER five.
I move that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER five.
Great. Do we have any discussion on this item? Okay. Hearing none. I will call for a vote. All in favor of finding the administration, finding the superintendent's performance to comply with ER five, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. Hearing none. We're going to move on. Your ER eight, communication and counsel to the board. Dana prepared a monitoring report and believes that all provisions of this policy have been followed and implemented. Do I have a motion regarding this executive, regarding this executive requirement?
Make a motion to approve the monitoring report for ER eight and find the superintendent in compliance.
Any discussion?
This one's always, I always, I, you're great at this. You're always on it and we don't usually have to ask many questions with the communication and everything there. And if we do, it's prompt and well put, so.
Yeah, I would just add, I, I, we, hopefully we all read through these monitoring reports. I did. And they're very thorough. And I wish that, you know, the community would take the time to take a look at these if they have any concerns or questions. But yeah, I, I have no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Hearing none, that motion passes. We are at policy review where we discuss the, and propose or make any revisions to policies we've reviewed in the prior month. So we have ER 10. Do we, is there any further discussion on ER 10, academic standards and practices? No? Okay. So then it says we need to take action on GP 11, conflicts of interest for districts with 2,000 or more students.
Yes, this is new language that came to us. As you know, WASTA periodically reviews legislation and other regulations that come through about the work that we do as school districts. And this was one of the required changes that we make. And as you know, this would, in, in a district that does not follow policy governance, this would be in the 1,000 series, which is their governance numbers. But it equates with our governance process, GP 11. And there's a lot of new language and a lot of crossed out language. But it, it's really about the conflict of interest for our board member who has a spouse or a business that interacts with the, with the school district and what rules we follow in that case. We recommend that you adopt the recommended changes, so.
Do you think you could summarize? I know it's a lot of cross outs and whatnot, kind of the spirit of what these changes are?
Yeah. So some of the new language in section one, as a director or officer of the board may enter into a business contract with the district as long as they would not receive, you know, for something they do outside of their board work, more than $1,500 in any month under that contract. In number two, it just goes beyond, it originally talked about the spouse of a director or an officer, which would be like the superintendent, may be employed as a substitute teacher on the same terms and the same compensation as other substitute teachers. But we must also, if that is the case, find that they, we didn't, the number of qualified substitute teachers in the district isn't sufficient to meet our needs without hiring that person.
I thought that was interesting.
Yeah. And part of that's old and part of it. Yeah, and part of that's old and part of it's new. Because they want us to be sure, they added the words that we're making those assignments fairly and impartially, partially and not because it's somebody's spouse. And then they took out all of number three.
Which, yeah.
On number two, where they're saying that, uh is it, I don't have it up at the moment. Um when a spouse not, they have to be, nobody else can be.
We, we can't.
Hired for that, they'll be hired.
We can't hire them because they're a spouse. It, the selection for them as a substitute person has to be fair and impartial. And their assignment to a building or an assignment has to be fair and impartial. They, they don't get special preference because they know somebody.
Like they're not, they're not hired even though they're the most qualified person, but the person, because their spouse is on the board, they weren't hired even though they were the most qualified.
No, that's, that's not what it says.
Okay. I just, that, when I read it at first, I went.
But if, if we're voting on something to do with a spouse or somebody of the board, as some of our board members know, then they, they recuse themselves from those.
I also have a question about that. So if we have two uh board members and um we need three votes and maybe two people had to pull themselves back and not vote, would we would just remove this one until a third vote would be?
Like tonight, because we don't have everybody here, potentially. But in the case of our two board members who have spouses who are employed by the district, they belong to different bargaining units.
Oh, okay.
So they wouldn't both be recusing themselves at the same time.
Great.
Um, okay, and then, you know, there's, there's just some clarification in number four, making the language more legal and clear about um if, if they were already working here, then, you know, we, we just keep things.
Right, like for number six, like this whole new one, they're saying, so before the board approves the employment of a director or a director's or an officer's spouse, the superintendent has to inform the board of the other people who are qualified for that position.
Right. So this is requiring full transparency. So if we have a new position that we're hiring and the person that we selected is related to one of us, then I have to not just give you the personnel report like we normally do, but give you the information about all the people who apply
Oh, okay.
and why we selected the person we selected.
Makes sense.
That's good.
And does this just extend to, I mean, when I looked through it, seems like it just extends to spouses. I didn't really see any like children or siblings or parents.
In a couple places it said or dependent, and that verbiage has been removed, so it is just spouses.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so this is not a new one, it has just been a lot of red marks.
Lot of, a lot of editing.
Yeah. At first I was like, wait a minute, this was one that we've already had, but it was so red that I was like, this is, because usually they write it in red when it's brand new. But, yeah, because I had already like thought about this and I, that we're not writing new ones.
When you get a clean copy, is it gonna be renumbered, since we took out number three then?
Yeah, Jackie will remember everything and take out all the red ink and take out all the crossed out stuff and all the underlies.
Well, do I hear a motion to, I guess, accept these revisions to our GP eleven um policy?
I'll make a motion to approve GP eleven as presented to us.
Do I hear, oh, I guess I don't need a second, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, um I'm gonna call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um anyone nay? Hearing none, we are moving on to adjournment. Um we are at the good of the order, board and superintendent. Start down with the superintendent.
Well, I mean, you've heard some really interesting, good things about the, the district tonight. The, I think the report from Belfair was very illuminating. And as, as you hear each of the reports from the buildings or the student groups, I think it, it really helps us understand what's going on in the district. Um I have had an opportunity in the last month to visit with school leaders around um the country. And, you know, in some places they have some resources that we don't have. But I come back really impressed with the work that we're doing and how much progress we've made, in particularly in the light of the fact that some people do have more resources than us. But our focus on meeting the needs of the whole child and fully implementing multi-tiered systems of support is so much stronger than you see almost anywhere else, and I'm really very proud of our staff. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Well.
Eric.
Uh I will add on top of that, I'm very impressed with that presentation and having a child that, or two children that are within the system. It is such a fresh of breath air seeing it in action and seeing them learn and benefit from those adjustments. And it's just great. And as Arlo was talking about, we were at WASDA, there was a lot of great information on, that I learned while I'm, as being a new board member. And it, it was very eye-opening and it was a lot of great learning on, occurred during that. So really appreciative of that time.
What was your favorite thing you learned?
I, I would say the budget portion. There was a ton we learned there of just really breaking down the budget and understanding a lot of the expenses and how it all functions. So there's, yeah, that was probably the best.
Great. Um I already talked about um the stuff I learned at WASDA in terms of being the legislative rep. There was also a lot of, I mean, the whole conference was pretty fantastic, just with the speakers that they selected. And the emcee, being Aaron Jones again, was really, it made it fun and not just boring to sit around. Laura was pretty passionate and I hope she gets to talk next month about student voice and um a lot of what we heard from the conference about how we as a board can better engage our students. I think she's passionate and has some ideas about working with Morgan and the roundtable and how to get new and different and eh more kids, but also engage even anyone who shows up at those. She's got a lot of ideas. I also, one of my takeaways as well, and I'm looking forward in my role as board president in pursuing these sort of two things. I attended a couple sessions on strategic planning and also on um student, um student board members and student, student voice in that aspect. And I'm just looking forward to expanding and working with Dana on the strategic plan and expanding, you know, working deeply in that process. And also working with our student board members on, you know, on what we can do to make that onboarding process for the next set of you guys better. What can we adjust and what we can do for you two now to help in your um just professional development? There were a lot of student board members at that conference and we missed you guys. And it was just cool to see what other districts have done to um strengthen that role. That's my present into the order.
All right. Um well, um first, the, uh the presentation was very cool. And I hope as they grow um in this, I know it's not brand new, um but these things take time to connect, because the middle school does win as well. And my son, um he has mixed feelings at times, but he's also a twelve-year-old boy and he's, hmm, you know, whatever. But um finding, finding how they can connect that elementary to the middle school and beyond, um I think will be ever-changing and really cool to see what comes, how they build that and build um a, I don't wanna say a better student, but maybe a more confident student uh through that. Um because I know that middle school is really hard time for confidence. Um and maybe um not just the reading aspects and all those things, but um really that social, emotional um connection through win would be a really, that's a really good time because they have such a broad um opportunity, I guess, or um other avenues to be able to touch different things there than they focusing on one thing. They're kind of um, kind of the octopus, you know, um of the class, it's kind of neat. And then um I did not get to, I had such a good plan for this amazing conference that everybody got to attend. And my grandmother is really, really old and I was, she's ninety-six. And I was like, you know, I'm gonna go a few days early and see her in Idaho. And I had a car rental ready and I was gonna drive there and drive over, stay a couple days and then drive over to the conference. And I was so excited and it was not even a few days before. And I finally, out of years, get COVID. And like finally, like it was something exciting, but I mean, why not? You know, it's something to go through and um I cried and cried. I've, I get, I have to admit, it was mostly because I really wanted to hug my grandmother. But this conference is always so important to go to because you don't, every time I've gone, I've learned something not different or more, I've learned it better. So I, when I know how to experience things a little bit better, um I like to challenge myself at the conference to, um this last one I got to go to, follow a theme that time. I, I followed every class that connected instead of jumping around and learning different things. I kind of went with a, a river flow kind of, and I enjoyed that. And I was kind of like, I had a strategic plan and I had it all written down. And I was telling my husband all about it and then I didn't get to go. And I had to miss the meeting too and it was, it was horrific. But um I'm glad um that there was a lot, uh it was an amazing conference, so. It was really cool and I'm looking forward to hearing um Laura's and then how it's uh, things to be implemented by it, so. And this has been a very big night and I know I'm just kind of drawing it on. There's a lot of things in this agenda. Um and I'm just, I'm so happy to be part of this board, so, and I'm, congratulations to you too.
Well, congratulations to my colleagues, to Arlo, Eric for their elevation. And I look forward to being a servant under your leadership this next year. I would just like to say for myself, and I'm very sorry that Laura isn't here, but I'm very glad that Hart is. One of the items that we dealt with this evening had to do with the motive I originally ran for this office four terms ago. And some people have questions about whether or not the arc of the universe bends toward justice. And my reflection on that this evening is, if you live long enough, you just might see it.
Amen.
So um the other thing is, I was very interested in, in the presentation. I won't go on about that, but I think that uh, I think there's something vital going on that I only perfectly understand, but out of low scores may be a symptom of something very positive moving under the surface, which is an entirely different definition of what constitutes a teacher and what constitutes professionalism in teaching. And uh since I'm up for the letter in January and I haven't a clue, Dana, in what you said at that very end, it struck me that that might be a very interesting theme. Because one of the things I've had, that I've wanted to um address is the misperception, I believe, of the quality of education that our schools are delivering. Sometimes the figures may tell you something about failure. Sometimes the figures may tell you about a new way of addressing some fundamental core issues. And I think if more people understood, that was our case in particular, that might help change public education, attitude towards what public education is really accomplishing. And what's really accomplishing rather than how it appears.
Anything else? Morgan?
So I'll try to keep this short.
Sorry.
This has been, this has been long, we definitely pushed my limits, but I enjoy it. Probably, I need to get used to this anyway. But um going off of what you said about um the onboarding process for student reps and all that, thank you Audrey, all that stuff, is um I'm not sure, but we as a student rep network over at WASDA put together this webpage that if you go to the WASDA, you go at the top bar, leadership and development. You go down to student board mem, student board representatives. And there's this really cool um.
They were talking about this at conference.
Yeah.
And we were like.
They have uh recommendations um that we put together for the board um for student reps. We put the, I helped put that together last year. And then we had two former school board reps, student school board reps. Um they went through and they did an audit of all the districts um that have, in Washington State that have student reps. And they put together all the policies and procedures for them. And they, we also put together a model policy and procedure, but they're.
They're nothing special, they're pretty bland, um nothing exciting, it's pretty much what we have just simplified.
But um that's a great resource that you can pull from, that um you guys may want to take a look at as we go through. As me and Audrey start to phase out and start training, help onboard whoever will be um replacing us later. Um that will be, it'll be a good starting point for not just us, but also you guys on the policy side. And um I'm looking forward to the um down the hill and the legislative conference. I will also be attending that, so that's going to be fun. I am looking forward to that. And um, yeah, that's all I have.
Cool. Audrey?
Um as far as that goes, I don't really have too much to say other than um, yeah, it's a good resource and I hope to help with the process of, I guess, onboarding as Morgan said, onboarding our new student board reps, because our time here is almost done. Or not almost, but it's coming to a close soon, so, um yeah. Um I hope to be a part of that process and I think this will be a good resource for us.
We have to find two whole new ones, that seems daunting.
I don't think it'll be as hard as you think, well, at least one of them.
We do want to, again, though, go back to having them be in two different grades.
Okay.
We do, as of right now, there has been one um junior, will be a senior next year, that has um expressed quite a bit of interest.
A lot of interest.
Well, and there is, there is a board policy that retires an interview and stuff, so we're gonna be stricter on that this year.
I know, but at least, at least we won't be pulling too many teeth.
Yeah.
So, but um there has been one so far and I'm trying to make this seem more exciting besides sit through a two and a half hour meeting. I'm trying to make it uh more exciting, that way we don't have to go around pulling teeth and dragging kids in to do this, so.
It's an ever-changing role and it'll be, uh, we'll see what happens in ten years or whenever.
Okay, we are now at board self-assessment at the meeting, which Director Croftser will process.
Here we go. Okay. Um, okay, so we have our four in attendance and Laura excused. Um I'm just going to um fly through this. The agenda was planned very well to focus on the real work of the board. The board followed its agenda and did not allow itself to get sidetracked. Board members prepared for and contributed to the meeting and it was very, it was very good tonight. Uh the meeting proceeded uh without interruptions or distractions. The board's uh deliberations and decision-making process were public, absolutely. The board's uh deliberations and decision-making process were public, absolutely, and then uh participation was balanced, all participated, no one dominated. Uh, members listened attentively, avoiding side conversation. Work was conducted in an atmosphere of trust and openness, and meeting participants treated each other with respect and courtesy, and that was satisfactory all the way down. And then, um, that was our general meeting behavior, and then on the second half of Governance Principles Review, the board actions occur at the policy level rather than at the operational level. The board reviews policy about each topic before discussing that issue. Um, on this one, uh, in writing additional policies, the board starts with a broad statement and becomes more detailed in a logical and disciplined sequence. I ended that one because we didn't do anything brand new, but yes, we did. Uh, the board minimizes time spent monitoring past performance. The board routinely dedicates time to reviewing and improving uh its own process. The board clarifies priorities and values when considering potential outcomes, beneficiaries, and cost of outcomes. The board follows an annual calendar based on a plan uh for doing its work, and I got to share that because uh last week somebody couldn't find it, and I was on it. It was a Facebook thing. And then the board chair helps the board efficient, efficiently conduct its meeting, and I put shared at the end, and then um, the board spends most of its time deliberating issues, defining and clarifying its vision, and linking with its community as opposed to fixing things. And the board supports the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of its policies, and I put yes all the way down, and where these principles follow, yes, and overall satisfactory.
Thank you, Leanna. Our next school board meeting will be on January nineteenth, our regular meeting at six thirty PM here in the boardroom, and it is with my pleasure that I am adjourning the meeting at nine oh two.